And I'm going to just read a statement. In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4 to 6, PL 1975 C 231 S 1, amended 2006, the Board of Education of Asbury Park has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press and the New Coaster on May 1st, 2024 via email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the Administration Building Bulletin Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the City Clerk on May 1st, 2024. Our mission statement, Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse and involving global society. Roll call?
Ms. Glassman?
Here.
Ms. Lesinski?
Here.
Dr. Maksud?
Here.
Dr. Penna?
Here.
Mr. Remy?
Ms. Ricks?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Grillo?
Here.
Thank you. Flag slough?
Flag slough.
Okay, thank you everybody for coming to the meeting. It's a special meeting. We're going to have, we're going to discuss the budget and hear from the public and then after all of that, we'll go, we have some business to take care of in executive session, correct? So why don't we start with the budget discussion? Mr. Schaffner and Superintendent, Acting Superintendent Gerbino.
So the Business Office, specifically Ivy Brown, has been working on the budget. Make it closer. I'll start over. Specifically Ivy Brown and the Business Office have been working on the 2024-25 budget. It's been, it's been sent to the County Office. They sent a list of items that need to be reviewed. At the same time, the budget is still out of balance. The latest that is out of balance is approximately $1 million. Even though there's going to be a bill that may pass on May 13th that would restore some state aid, the district was told today that they have to balance the budget and any cuts that are made can be restored if that state aid is increased. So what we're doing, what we're doing is going line by line, reviewing the budget. Some lines need to be increased, other lines need to be decreased. We have the Position Control Roster that is 100% in balance with the budget. That was one of the things that needed to be corrected. And we're going to continue working on this until the budget is balanced. Thinking that it will happen sometime this week.
All right. So in terms of what we're going to be, what we're going to be talking about, well, I'll tell you what, we'll go into public participation, but in terms of what we're going to be voting on today, can you give just like a brief on that because of what you just?
You will not be voting on the budget tonight.
Okay.
There is no vote scheduled for the budget. Some items that need to be looked at, I don't know, is township payment towards courtesy busing for safety busing. The township is responsible for safe passage to the schools. And if there are hazardous routes, I would hope that they would pay some of the costs of the transportation on these hazardous routes. That's something, that's a source of revenue that would be very helpful for the school district.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Vice President, to the extent that the Board has not yet passed a final budget due to the fact that a final budget has not yet been struck, it may make sense for the Board to consider scheduling another meeting at which the budget hopefully once balanced can be passed. Just a, just a thought that you may want to consider.
So how much time do we need because we need to advertise the meeting, correct? So if that's the case, then we would have to do it the earliest next week and do it on a Tuesday so that?
(Inaudible).
Right.
With all the members or just the finance committee?
No, it would be the, it would be the full board.
The full board.
So, and yeah, I mean, then we'll get a little bit more clarity as to if this bill passes on the 13th, we'll have a clearer view of what the budget will look like and what we're, what we're, you know, what we're eventually going to be voting for. So can I hazard to say that if we schedule a meeting for the 14th, which is next Tuesday, if the, no? Well, why don't we discuss a date that works for everybody?
When is your, when is your next?
Our next board meeting is the 23rd, which is a Thursday. But is that too late?
(Inaudible). I mean, we're, we're running down. Yeah. I mean, late is late, so we're late.
I mean, we're already going to be late, right?
My idea is that if we, as soon as we balance the budget, we send it to the County Office. If they approve it, then we can have a advertised budget hearing. That's my idea right now. Because you did, you did send to them a preliminary budget.
Right.
Even though, even though it's not balanced, you did send one to them.
It's a preliminary one.
So what we're doing now is we're making corrections to that. And once the County Office approves that, then we can advertise and have a budget hearing and, and finally approve the budget.
I think that makes perfect sense.
So why don't we just hold off until the 23rd, our next, our next regular meeting? Right? Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Vice President. Since we have people in the seats that want to discuss the budget, I wasn't here for the last meeting. I tried to be, tried to be fully connected, but I had some audio issues. But I think a lot of people are concerned about a lot of things that are going on that include in making this budget work for this community. And a lot of information has not fully been expressed to everyone. And stuff is in the paper. We've had people, you know, tell us, a lot of the things you read are correct or not correct. Our budget reflects on many things. One of them is providing financial services to College Achieve. And if anybody saw the article that NJ.com just did on College Achieve to see where some of their funding, which comes out of us, goes to them, where they're paying off a retired or whatever he is, CEO, almost $700,000 for, for his services when people's taxes in Asbury Park are going up. Also, there's not been a lot of talk about the fact that we have not certified all the students who are actually, that we're paying for in this district. And we're trying to do that right now with College Achieve to certify how many students we're actually paying for and what that cost is to this district. Now, I can get into all day thing. I like talking about it, the S2 spending, spending fiasco that, that is going on and things that have interrelated with pilots and everything else. And I would sit down personally and tell people about the S2 bill, which talks about funding for all school districts, but leaves out a portion where people who are living on the oceanfront aren't paying their full share of taxes and their income is related to the increase in your taxes, which forces us to raise the budget to satisfy our kids. So all these things are, are issues that we're talking about in, in our finance committee on a regular basis. These things are objectifying what our priority is, is to get the Asbury Park school kids an adequate school district, but also try to decrease the amount of taxes that we, that we need to do it. And there's other services of special, special needs that we're trying to rectify and, and so many different issues. And this is the first time that I've ever heard a discussion like this where we talk about many issues that go into this budget. Now, I can't sit here and go through every, each item specifically. And like I said, I, you know, anybody can reach me or I can give out my number. I will sit down and talk to anything about this budget to discuss the issues that have to be discussed in relationship to this, to this, to this district. We have talked about many issues when I sat and stood at that podium about excessive amount of administrative budgets. I've talked about buildings. I've talked about our academic status. So all these things are factors that determine how this budget is shaped. And one, I personally have tried to make this budget the best that I could make it. And I think everyone else should be on board to see the same idea that we need to get everything done. And the only way you do that is to know the facts, you know what needs to get done and to look at that we have a structural difference, deficit with the state and how financing from this community is being, is being put out. So there's a lot that this goes in. So this is, you know, this is not the faint of heart. And if anybody wants to sit down, like I said, with me, I can give you my personal, not the Board's perspective, my personal opinion on this budget, what I'm looking at achieving. And hopefully it's the same thing I hope that the Board will look to. And that's one, give a quality education to the kids in this district, to decrease taxes as much as can or not raise them as much as we can to facilitate that.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. And I'll just add to that, that we just, I just learned today that College Achieve, their 41%, 41.7% of their revenue goes to administration and 41% goes to actual education. So, and I could tell you that that's not how it is here, no matter what people say about us being quote unquote top heavy. So it's, it's a lot of discussion that's, that's going to happen. Before I open it up for public comment, does anyone else have anything you want to say, express? I just want to make sure everyone gets their, their turn. Okay? All right. So I'm going to open it up to public participation, public comment. So in accordance with Board Policy 0167, Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and other matters of importance and provides members of the public with the opportunity to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The public comment portion of the meeting is not a question and answer session and all public comments shall be directed to the Board President or the Presiding Officer of the meeting. Members of the public who wish to make public comments must be recognized by the Presiding Officer and provide his or her name, municipality of residence, or and/or group of affiliation. All public comments shall be directed to the Presiding Officer and are limited to three minutes in duration. Members of the public who do not follow the foregoing rules or interfere with the orderly operation of the board meeting may be removed from the meeting. Yeah? Sure.
Good evening. John Napolitani, President of the Asbury Park Education Association, 8 Old Weathersfield Road, Ocean, New Jersey. Mr. Rogers, I want to thank you for mentioning the fact that the charter school is paying an abuse of salaries out of the taxpayers' pockets. It's absolutely disgusting. But that guy up there, that's the Acting Superintendent, fought by my side and a bunch of other staff at the Thurgood Marshall Elementary School many years ago against this charter school and the abuse that they did throughout the country, not the state of New Jersey. Los Angeles, Las Vegas, Chicago, now to pillage New Jersey. And it's disgusting what I saw in that article. I knew it was bad. I knew it was bad. I didn't know it was that bad. A pair, a husband and wife, a half a million dollars a year to run one school? Out of your pockets, everybody that lives in the city of Asbury Park. And I have to sit as the president of my union, defend my staff, and bust my tail to negotiate a contract so that they can have a regular living wage, which in some cases, for some of my support staff, isn't even a living wage. But yet we're forking millions of dollars over to that charter school. And I thank you for saying something. I thank this Acting Superintendent for joining me in sending a letter to Senator Gopal to demand an immediate investigation into what's going on with that charter school. It's disgusting. It's outrageous. And it's unconscionable that this is going on and it's got to stop. So therefore, I ask every resident in the city of Asbury Park to send these legislators an email or a letter demanding an investigation. And I want to thank Senators Ruiz and Sarlo, you can thank them, for blowing the lid off this thing. Because it's going to be Asbury Park that's going to take this ball to the end and finish them off because enough's enough. Our kids have been robbed of teachers, really good staff, that I've represented over the years. And it's sad, but at least I had a discussion with this guy about the cuts that we were seeing and it was not as bad as it could have been, believe me. And I guarantee this Board right now, that if he did not repair the damage that was done with Senator Gopal, I don't think we would be looking at any money. That's the God's honest truth. All we can do is go but up at this point. So I urge everybody, demand an investigation into this charter school. Everyone needs to do that. Thank you.
Good evening. Tom Gilmore, 1308 Fifth Avenue. I also want to learn more about this College Achieve situation here. And my questions really are, so they've apparently purchased property in Middletown. They're going to move the school. I think that's good for them. Their heart and soul was never here. And, but what happens to us when that happens? Are we still obligated to make a payment to a school that's now 20 miles away from us? I mean, that doesn't make any sense whatsoever. And our poor kids, you know, now they're going to have to get on a bus and travel, you know, maybe even an hour with traffic to get to school every day. So.
Comes out of our tax dollars, by the way, transportation.
Yep, exactly. So there's a, there'll be an additional cost associated with that. So I agree with John that we really need to fight this thing and figure out how we can stop it. And is there any way of getting out of a contractual agreement that we have with them? None. That's a typical New Jersey situation.
Yeah, we, we, if they move to old modern day high school and our students are going there, we will be paying for our students that attend and we will be paying for the busing to bring them up there. There is no contract. The state just says, you're paying. We've been on, I've been on a call with the Department of Education. We pleaded our case and we're directed to pay.
Yeah, I mean, it just doesn't, I mean, if we have to, if the children still want to go to the school, God bless them, but, you know, and I can't be opposed to paying for that, but what about all these administrative things and all the other programs that are going on that our kids are not benefiting from? You know, it just, it's broken and we got to figure out how to fix it. But, you know, our taxes here, you know, we don't even really need to talk about them. They're extremely high right now and, you know, we got to do everything that we can to, to make them reasonable here. Otherwise, everybody's going to be leaving Asbury Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Felia Kendall. I live on Fourth Avenue. And of course, I, like everybody's here, I'm here for the budget.
Ms. Kendall, I'm sorry. Can you put the microphone closer?
Okay. Oh, yes.
As they say, eat the mic.
Right. Again, Felia Kendall, Fourth Avenue. And like everybody here, I'm here about the budget. I didn't know that whoever, Elise Brown was the Board Secretary who was working on it. I, oh, and forgive me, I keep getting this. I don't know where to get answers from if that, I can't have a question and answer period here. And I heard you read it, so I know. But where then do I get answers when I have questions?
Any questions that you have, you, I mean, look, you can email us and we'll refer it to the Superintendent, but the best thing to do is to, is to email the Superintendent.
Or go over to his office?
I mean, you could, you could do.
I could do that out of an Asbury. I got a car.
You gotta do, right.
No problem.
But I think, I think sending an email, gerbino, G E R B I N O M, at apboe.org is the most direct way to get an answer back.
Oh, okay. Well, now, what I didn't know about is I did read something about that College Achieve school. And when I saw something, it was about the salaries of some of the people there. And then it was a salary of somebody who was like, it was over half a million dollars for one person, but then the other two people made up about half a million dollars. You've got to know. I, since I, and I didn't know about them moving or anything like that, but that's why I'll keep coming to the board meetings to find out. But if for some reason, College Achieve helps the children who go there, I'm talking about, actually helps them, I, and, and I am a retiree, so don't get me wrong, I'm not working. When my property taxes go up, just got to do something different. But I keep seeing things that happen here. At least I keep seeing workshops that have been done. But once the workshops are done, if the people, the teachers who went to the workshops come back, then we'll see like the great results for our children in Asbury Park. Because that is my only, only concern, is the children who go to this school district.
Sorry, time's up. I'm sorry. Your time is up.
That's Ms. Brown, who you mentioned before.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kendall.
Hello, Edie Victorin, speech pathologist in the district, Union County. I just wanted to make a comment because I, I heard people talking about College Achieve and just charter schools in general. And I know a couple of people that work at charter schools and just from my own experience, I think what people don't realize is that, you know, not to take away from what they do, but this is a, an establishment that takes public funding, but don't have to follow public rules. Right? So for, like, they're not, for example, our children with IEPs, they're not obligated to give them any services. Right? And then also our children who are behavioral, they get kicked right back after they've already taken the tuition. So for me, children first, right? You deal, I mean, children are children. They have, they're behavioral issues, they're children who have IEPs, who have, who need assistance, who need extra, whatever it is. And when you're an establishment who again, takes public funding, money out of your pockets, right? But doesn't have to follow IDEA or those rules, that's a problem. Especially when they refuse to verify, sorry, I should be addressing the, sorry. Especially when they refuse to verify what students were actually paying for. So we don't even know what we're paying for. And when, you know, I wouldn't want my taxes to go up, you know, so I'm, I think that, you know, a lot of people, you know, they look at us and see us as the problem, but I'm like, there's a greater problem here. And some people are asking, what should they do? Exactly what John said, call them, write emails, write letters. Some of the staff have already done that, you know, because I think it is a crime, especially when some of my, and these parents, they, they bring their kids to these schools thinking, oh, you know, this is better for my kid, but guess what? When that deadline hits, you know, because they always do it up until whatever the state requires that, oh, we get to keep the tuition up to this date. And then all of a sudden, we get an influx of those students back into the district. And that is a disruption of education right there. And then when you read about salaries and what they're making, and we're like, we can't even verify what students were paying for, that's a problem. You know, so there's corruption on levels, when you're unwilling to respond to, hey, how many students actually go here? I think that's a red flag. And again, I encourage everyone to please write a letter, email, call, ask for an appointment, whatever it is that you can do, because it's not even just about your taxes, it's really about the kids. Really. And this is just.
Thanks.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, hold on. So just to be clear, when we talk about charter schools, you're right, they do not offer the services to our students that we could offer them. They can't do it. They claim they do, but they don't. I have personally been on the phone with Senator Gopal. I have spoken to the County Office. I've talked, spoken to DOE about my concerns and not sure if they're, if I'm being heard or listened to, but I am making my concerns, I'm putting my concerns out there. We're having difficulty trying to verify the number of students they say they have from Asbury Park. They refuse to send their parents to us with the proper identification so we can verify they live here in Asbury Park. Not that I want to throw a little more fuel on the fire, but understand, they've had students register here in Asbury Park and go to College Achieve to play basketball this past year. So that is what's happening with the money that should be coming to us. But I have been on the phone, I have been Zoom calls. I've, I've been doing this back since 2016 when I stood in front of College Achieve over, but I'm not sure what road that is, the church on Grand Ave, with my staff, picketing what was going on out in the snow for several days. My voice wasn't heard, but I'm only one voice, so it's going to take everyone here to speak up because it's your money.
Thank you. Anyone else that wants to make a public comment? This is your chance. Okay? All right. With that, I'm closing public participation. Before we vote to go into executive session, Mr. Gerbino, would you just go real quick through the rest of the, the agenda, the B1?
I would like a consent agenda for B1 and B2.
Let me take a vote on it now, right? I'll move it.
Second.
Discussion. Okay. Roll call.
Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Dr. Maksud?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
I abstain and I recuse myself from any...
Let me take a vote on it now, right? I'll move it.
Second.
Discussion. Okay, roll call.
Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Dr. Maxut?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
I abstain and I recuse myself from anything having to do with awards on item number two because I am conflicted.
Thank you. Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Guillo?
Yes.
Pass.
Okay. Now we will, someone make a motion to go into executive caucus.
Make a motion.
Move it.
Second. Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Dr. Maxut?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yep.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
No, with an explanation because I don't like how I'm spoken to in closed executive session. So my vote is no.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Guillo?
Yes. Okay.
Pass.
So I'm going to just read a quick whereas here. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act allows for the exclusion from discussion at the public portion of a meeting of certain matters as outlined below. And whereas the Board of Education wishes to discuss such matters made and will make such discussion public when a proper conclusion has been reached. Now therefore be it resolved that the Asbury Park School Board will hold a closed executive session on this date, May 7, 2024, at Asbury Park, New Jersey for the purpose as outlined below. And Mr. Weiss, you can kind of explain that.
Yes, the board is going to be going into closed executive session to discuss employment matters, contract matters, and to receive attorney-client advice. It's anticipated that the board will be in executive session for approximately 20 minutes. The board will not be taking any formal action while it's in executive session. To the extent that there's going to be any formal action, it will be taken out here in the public, in the sunshine, upon the board's return from executive session. So for the members of the audience that are here and those watching at home, the board will be going into an executive session for about 20 minutes. We will be returning to the public session after about 20 minutes, at which time it's expected that we're going to adjourn. But everyone is welcome to stay and wait for us to return. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Okay. Thanks, everybody, for your patience. Motion to go back into regular session.
Move it.
Second. Roll call.
Ms. Glassman?
Here.
Dr. Maxut?
Here.
Dr. Penna?
Here.
Mr. Remy?
Here.
Ms. Ricks? Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Guillo?
Here.
Okay. So before we go, upon recommendation of the acting superintendent, I'd like to approve the medical leave for employee number 94045028.
Second. Who made the first?
Effective today, yeah. Excuse me, sorry.
Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Dr. Maxut?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
I can't see Ms. Ricks because she wasn't there. Right? Ms. Ricks?
I'm going to abstain. I don't have enough information.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Guillo?
Yes.
Pass this.
Okay. And also, upon recommendation of the acting superintendent, appointing employee 33004318 as acting principal of the high school until the end of the year or until employee 94045028 returns.
Effective today.
Effective today, yes.
Second. Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Dr. Maxut?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Abstaining, I don't have enough information.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Guillo?
Yes.
Pass.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Shuffling papers here.
Mr. Remy, you voted twice.
Have a good night, everyone. Thank you very much.